Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Street.
Present.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Present. Item number three is prayer and pledge. If everyone would stand. Vice Mayor Butler.
Lord, we're meeting today to collect matters of business. We got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number five, approval of the agenda.
Move for approval. Second.
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Street.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item five passes five zero. Item number six, citizens' comments.
There are none tonight, Mayor.
Item number seven, public announcements, awards and recognitions. And city events.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Just have a couple. The Nature Fest, we're still taking applications. It will be held in Bowie Nature Park on Saturday, September 23rd from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Also, Saturday, July 29th, we'll have our back-to-school supply drive at City Hall from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And the back-to-school supply drive is an event where we give out backpacks that are filled with school supplies for kids. We are asking that the child be present when picking up a backpack and that they live in Fairview. Thank you, ma'am.
Item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports. Item A is the police report.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Chief Humphries is under the weather, but he wanted to be here, so he asked me to do this for him. For personnel report, we are completely up to staff, which is exciting. Overtime is down, training hours are down, and consisting of those trainings were firing range, basic in-service, basic police school, active shooter and background investigations. Next. Our calls for service are down. Looks seventeen. Our arrests are down. domestics are also down. DUIs, we have 11 total from May to June. We had six in June and five in May. Drug charges are down. Theft is down. Citations is up quite a bit. We had 142 between May and June. We had 85 for June, 57 in May. Traffic accidents, 23 for May, 27 for June. Property damages, 22 for May and for June. Injuries, one for May, four for June, and we did have a fatality in June. September 23rd, we're going to have a concessions tent at Nature Fest. Per usual, it will all go to Shop With The Cop. Also, Jody Ball is at the top left, Danielle Floyd is top right. They are two of our new officers. They are now on the road. They have completed the FTO program. Cody Hargrove is bottom left. He's in the back. And Jake Slack is bottom right. They are about to complete the FTO program.
Could you repeat the two new officers' names, please? Jody?
Oh, Jody Ball, that's going to be the top-left corner, and then Danielle Floyd is the top-right. Cody Hargrove is bottom-left, and then Jake Slack.
Is that B-A-L-L, Ball?
Yes, Ball.
Okay.
And again, thank you for passing the budget. It's been awesome. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Item 8B is the fire report. Chief Hughes.
Mayor, Commissioners. For the month of June, we were up again. We had 110 emergency calls. We responded to with significant events, including 22 overlapping incidents. Again, just to reiterate, that is when one crew is out on a call and we get a call for service for another emergency before they can clear the previous call. We had three incidents where fires were extinguished. One was a building fire inside the city. One was a passenger vehicle fire, and one was a semi-truck fire. We had one automatic aid response to our surrounding jurisdictions in Williamson County. Our average response time was up just a little, and our operating time on scene was down. Again, anytime there's an emergency, your first call should be 911. We are still getting calls at the station. We actually have people that are leaving messages on our voicemail for emergency calls, so just would like everybody just to call 911 if there's an emergency. The breakdown for the call volume in June looks similar like it does most months. Medical and rescue calls are leading the way at 74%. That's going to usually stay somewhere. National average is 72 to 78, so we're right in the middle of that range. And then that's the breakdown of the rest of the calls. Our heat map for June, since we did have a significant more calls in June than we did last year, you can see the heat map. The heat map's going to stay, it's going to look similar each time because our hot areas are going to be hot most always, but one thing that we have noticed is those areas are getting larger because we're getting more and more calls, and that's the way the graph gets plotted from the system that we use to report our emergency calls. And next slide. Fire prevention activities, we had 19 fire and life safety inspections. Again, we only had a few minor corrective action notices issued. Everybody has complied and made the changes they needed to. We had six plan reviews that were completed, one food truck inspection, one fire protection system test, and then we are geolocating our fire hydrants and putting them in our system. A lot of the new neighborhoods, those are not in our system yet. We had 68 interactions at four events. Again, if city residents need smoke alarms, please call the fire station, ask for the fire marshal. That'll get you in touch with him, and he'll schedule a time for one of our crews to come out and install that fire, that smoke detector for. 424 hours of training in June. As you can see, the top-right slide, that's our new training classroom that was completed this spring. And then Todd and the Public Works guys helped us with the old training tower that was long past its life and smoothed out that area where it was at. As you can see from one of the pictures, from the top of the tower now, that's just a blank lot now on the side over there where the old tower used to stand. And then that's the bay for the ambulance crew that was recently renovated for their quarters and our training classroom. I think that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Can you tell us about the trailer that's out on 96? We've had a lot of questions about that.
Yes, ma'am. I imagine you did.
Yeah, so I'd just like for the record for us to, you know, just explain that.
So the trailer that is out there is actually owned by Williamson County EMA. They put that there. There was an ordinance that was voted on, I guess it was an ordinance that was voted on in 2020 by the board to allow them to put a structure out there. They put, that is for their volunteer fire captains or their volunteer fire personnel that also use our bay out there to house an engine in 35. And they would be putting on a second ambulance crew in Fairview. It'll be a daytime ambulance, is what I'm told. Probably nine in the morning till nine at night. Our call volume is up enough that they're bringing other ambulances in from other parts of the county just to cover while ours out, so their next step is to put a 12-hour truck out there. But the ambulance crew will be out there during the day. County fire captain has an office out, will have an office out there. And then it's also for the volunteers, for the Williamson County Rescue Squad, to have a place to hold their training and meetings for Station 35, which is the volunteer organization that houses the engine in the other bay of our station out there. That agreement, I think, runs out in 2025, if I remember correctly. And, but it has renewal, five-year renewal on it that you guys will be able to vote on. More questions?
And is the training tower ready for volunteers?
Well, we are going to have Commissioner Camp on August 1st. You guys all got an email, and we invite you guys out to come. Jake is putting together a training program for that night. We've got some cool things going on. We got a car that you're going to be able to cut on. We'll let you extinguish a fire. We'll go over kind of what we do and how we do it, and give you some tours of the new training facility and the new classroom area. We're excited to have you on the first. All the guys are, we're getting it all prepped, and we'll be ready to go when you guys get there.
I've had a little bit of technical issue with my email, so what is the date on that?
It's August 1st, and it's 5:00 o'clock, and I know that's during the World Series. Is that correct? But I think that game starts at 10:00 in the morning and a possible 12:00, but we won't start our training for Commissioner Camp until 5:00 o'clock that evening.
That is on Monday?
Mon, no, that's Tuesday the 1st.
I'm sorry, Tuesday the 1st.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the 31st is Monday. Okay.
Chief, I have a question on the first pie chart.
Yes, sir.
What was the call for the hazardous substance?
I would have to look at that. Nothing strikes me as standing out, but sometimes it's a gas leak. Normally, it would be a gas leak at a fueling station. Someone either overfueled it or pulled a nozzle out. It wasn't enough to call EMA for a hazardous material response from the county, so if it's less than 55 gallons, they don't come out. They don't have to notify them. We take care of those small things.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Thank you. See you guys on the first.
Item 8C, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilor. I don't have a lot to report. We've been working hard. The staff's been working hard. I did want to follow up on Detective Reed. I did have the opportunity to onboard two more police officers this week, and I'm looking forward to seeing them. It was Maria Vanderknapp and John Gunn II. So we're excited to have them onboard. We've been very busy prepping for our annual audit, and it's been scheduled to do, they're supposed to do their field work the last week in August. So it's, we're just hunkering in for the final lap of the relay race, I feel like, and it's, everybody, everybody just is doing their job and working hard. I appreciate, appreciate all the staff. Thank you.
Any questions from the board before we move on? Item nine, consent agenda. A, minutes from July 6, 2023, Board of Commissioner work session. And nine B, minutes from July 6, 2023, Board of Commissioner regular meeting.
Second.
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Street.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Nine A and B pass five zero. Item 10, old business. There is no old business tonight. Item 11, new business. A, resolution 48-23, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase agreement between Herring Technology and the City of Fairview, Tennessee, City Manager Tom Darti, and would a representative from Herring please come forward?
Thank you, Mayor. As all of you know, we've got a door key security system. I'm not sure exactly how old it is, but it was here when I got here, and one of the motherboards burned up, and of course, there are no parts to replace it. And so we asked Keystone to help us vet three different companies, and this is our choice, Keystone's choice, Herring Technology. One of the things that really set them apart is looking to the future, our possible future needs, and also just our customer service has been outstanding. Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Does anyone have, can you just tell us your name?
I'm sorry, Mike Snyder.
Thank you.
Herring Technology, yes, ma'am.
Does anyone have a question from the board for Mr. Snyder?
Don't for Mr. Snyder, but I do for Mr. Darti. Tom, when you say "we" is in the city and Keystone vetted three of them, did we take bids or did we, what was the vetting process that was used?
Yes, we've got, we had the scope of work, and we asked three companies to provide their solution and what they, what their price would be.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Street.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11A passes five zero. Item 11B, resolution 49-23, a resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners to formally adopt the Fairview Parks Master Plan. Park Director, Mr. Keith Paisley.
Move for approval.
Second.
Does anyone from the board have any questions? We just had a workshop that was just completed right before our meeting. And if anyone has any questions, then for Mr. Paisley.
Mayor, I don't have any questions, but I do think you hit on a perfect topic during the work session in noting that in this, this is a, this is a plan. It is a very good plan. But she mentioned that it is not set in stone. It's like the comprehensive land use plan or the 2040 plan. It is a plan. It is a guide, but it is not set in stone. I just wanted that on the record.
Anyone else? Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Street.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item 11B passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. And thank you to your team, Lisa, and everyone who worked on this master plan. We appreciate your hard work. Item 11C, resolution 50-23, a resolution authorizing the Fire Department of Fairview, Tennessee to participate in public entity partner, safety partners matching grant program. Fire Chief Scott Hughes.
Move for approval.
Second.
Do you have anything you'd like to add or?
This is a grant program that we've been participating in since I've been here. Unfortunate thing is, back when I first started here, the $2,000 that we got from public entity partners is matching, so we, they give 2,000, we put in 2,000. That used to buy us one set of turnout gear. Now it buys a half a set of turnout gear, so it's things that we already buy. It just helps us out to take down the cost of that just a little bit for one set of turnout gear, but it's very much appreciated. Helps us, you know, get a little bit more than we were budgeted for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, I was going to ask the question, what is the typical valuation or grant value?
So this grant is fixed. It's based on, it's based on our level of liability for the city. So based on the better we are, the safer we are as a city, the grant actually goes down, so it goes up if we're less safe or have more claims. So it's a good thing that it is where it is, but that's how they have it. It's a tiered plan based on your amount of liability.
Any other discussion or questions for Chief Hughes? Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Street.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Thank you. Item 11C passes five zero. Item 11D, resolution 51-23, a resolution authorizing this, the Fairview Fire Depart, I mean, sorry, Police Department to continue participating in the Law Enforcement Supply Off, Support Office 1033 program.
Move for approval. Second.
Anything you'd like to add, Detective Reed?
So back in May, May 25th of last year, there was an executive order by the President that said that we had to make public that we were participating in the LISO program, which means Law Enforcement Support Office. Essentially, what that is, is that we get military surplus, and then we use it as revenue to purchase items for the Police Department. And in the past, we've used it to purchase, I believe Chief said, five new cars.
Anyone from the board have any questions for Detective Reed?
Mayor, I was going to ask a question of if we remember how much we got from last year. I think it's a program that you guys do that probably goes unspoken or unappreciated where it's creating quite a bit, like several, about five cars off of it so far, so great work.
Anyone else? Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Street.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11E, items for discussion. These items were brought to the agenda from Commissioner Street. Before we begin, I'd just like to say that a lot of these items, we have MTS available for workshops to give information and training to any of the board who would like to set up, if we need to set up training for any of these items, that can be done after we discuss them. So item E1 is discussion regarding variances. Commissioner Street.
So over the past year or two, I've attended and watched quite a few PC and zoning appeals meetings. I've noticed a common question that is asked when the request is made, and it's asked of a board member. Will this be cheaper for you? Will this save you money? Why is this asked when a variance is requested? Should we be considering a cheaper route for the one requesting the variance? What do we consider a hardship? And I want this for acknowledgement for us, for me and the citizens of Fairview to understand how we work and what we do.
Vice Mayor Butler, I think you're probably one that would answer this best.
Mayor, just reference, and Ethan is fresh here, but the zoning ordinance specifically speaks to not granting a variance based off economical needs. And so it's driven by challenging slopes or things like that, but it specifically speaks to a variance would not be granted based off economical needs. So that wouldn't, I don't think that would be the case.
And like I said, if the community would like knowledge and training on any of these topics, we can easily have MTS come in and do a whole workshop on any of this that is of concern.
Mayor.
Yes.
So the, I don't attend the Board of Zoning Appeals hearings for the City of Fairview. Not that I can't, I just, I haven't. But there's a specific legal test that the Board of Zoning Appeals is supposed to be using in order to decide whether a variance should be granted to the zoning ordinance. One, is there a physical characteristic of the property that, such as exceptional topographical or geographical concerns that would cause an undue hardship for the owner of the property? Two, that it's unique to the property, not all the other properties around it. Three, that the hardship is not self-imposed by the property owner. And four, that there's no harm to the public welfare. If all those tests are met, it's an and test, so each of those have to be met, then the variance can be granted. If they're not met, the variance should not be granted. It's a fairly strict standard, so that's the legal standard. In practicality, many boards of zoning appeals function as a chancery court, meaning they try to find the equity or the fairness for the homeowner. And I think that's probably what Commissioner Street is talking about. I think if the Board of Zoning Appeals is not using this test, and some of this probably has been difficult because we've been down a planner, but the planner should be having a report on when the variance is requested and go through these criteria and tell the Board of Zoning Appeals their opinion about whether it's met or not and whether the variance should be granted. Now, that doesn't mean the Board of Zoning Appeals is always going to listen to the planner's recommendation, but that's what they should be considering when they examine whether a variance should be granted or not. So if this test is not being used, then I think it's incumbent upon the city to make sure that the people that are on the Board of Zoning Appeals have the correct training so they know what the legal standard is that they should be using.
And I would assume that Mr. Greer is attending, will attend the Boza meetings. So that will be, you know, I guess tasked to you to make sure they understand the rules. Is that sufficient, Ms. Street? All righty. I'm sorry, Commissioner Street. Item E2, discussion on PCBOC. Commissioner Street.
So this is recording the special meeting that was called on June 13th. Since the special meeting was vote, was to vote in Mr. Butler back onto the PC and zoning planning and engineering committee, whose seat was empty that he was voted in for?
There wasn't an empty seat. We just made a switch, which we're, Mr. Carter can speak to that, but that is, we're able to do that at any time. Am I correct on that?
Yes, that seat serves as the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners. And so, my understanding is the Board of Commissioners decided to replace the person that they had formerly appointed with another board member, and that's permissible under the law.
So, under what terms or why did y'all believe that that person needed to be replaced?
The Board discussed it at that meeting, Commissioner Street, and they don't necessarily have to give you a reason or answer that question. They just felt the need to replace that seat, and they did. They took that action. So, the time to ask that would have been at that meeting.
I'm good with that one.
Item E3, Discussion on Voting for Developments.
Over the past...
But, I'm sorry, but against citizens' wishes. I was just trying to get that straight in my head, so. And that's Commissioner Street as well.
Over the past year and a half, I've witnessed several times that the City Hall will be packed and even lined out the door with the citizens fighting against a certain development or things like that, yet the citizens were ignored. Our job as commissioners is to satisfy the wants and needs of the citizens and not the developers. The records do not reflect that the Board is doing that. We were still elected to serve the citizens.
Commissioner Street, I would challenge you on that. While I think it's important to listen to your constituents and try to advance their interest, it's also the responsibility of this Board to follow the law. And when you're considering development proposals, depending on where you are in the process, there's particular legal standards and legal tests that must be considered, and the decision can't be arbitrary and capricious. It can't be just what the citizen wants this, or the citizen wants this or wants that. That's not the legal test, and that's about the quickest way you can get the city sued, is to just do what, this is not an individual democracy where everybody gets a vote. You're elected to have knowledge and consider facts that are privileged to you that the regular citizen does not necessarily have. You're also required to follow the law in that process. And so, I understand what you're saying. I appreciate the need to listen to your constituents and represent them, but I think your duty is actually quite a bit higher than what you just laid out. I think you have much more responsibility and aren't giving yourself nearly enough credit as a commissioner if that's all you think your job is about. With all respect.
Okay, ready for the next one?
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm ready for the next one.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Chief Hughes, what is the rating for how many people can be in this building, in this room, sorry?
Chief Hughes, you'll need to come forward so the people at home can hear you.
Is it still there?
Still there. 130 people.
130.
By fire code, yes, sir.
Commissioner Street, do you realize that if every person in this room was against something, that's still one, less than 1% of the population?
Correct, but who's here for what's on the agenda is the question.
Based on what you're saying, is every other person in the city could be for it and just decided not to come?
Then how do we know that they decided for it? We don't. We've got to have representation.
Do you not get phone calls?
No.
Oh, well, I've done it for a long time, and people call me or talk to me at the store and say, that's great, I hope this passes. I mean, it happens all, all the time, but just because 100 people show up, you can't go against 9,900 others.
So, we need people here to show that they are for or against. We need citizens to come forward and be here, be present. So, if the ones are coming forward, 130 are coming forward to be present, and there's nine coming forward to be for it, does the ones for it, does that not being here answer the 9,000 other citizens?
It does in a way, based on what our city attorney just told us. The people elect us to come up here and make the decisions, and they speak, we speak for them. Are you, when you're, are you saying that when you vote, you're only voting on who comes up to that podium and complains or says they're for it?
No, I'm voting for the 1,500 people that voted me in to represent them and their wishes.
So, you're not voting for the other 7,000, 8,000?
I need to know what they want, just like y'all need to know what they want to approve it, so.
You need to know what the law is so you can properly consider that in your vote, first and foremost.
Are you?
Because if you have 100 people and 90 are for something, if 90 are against basic human rights, and 90 are against that, and 10 are for it, it doesn't mean that the 90 are correct. They're still wrong. They may be the majority, but they're wrong. And that's why we live in the United States where both the majority and the minority are protected. You have to know what the law is, and so that's my job. And so, when I say that this is the legal standard you're to judge this by, the response shouldn't be, well, my constituents, all my citizens, think I should do this. If it's wrong, it's wrong. And so, the law is important. Otherwise, I don't need to be here if you're not gonna consider the law.
So, the ones that are here don't have a choice. I mean, whatever's gonna happen is gonna happen.
That's a gross simplification and misstatement of what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, your responsibility is to understand the law and then to follow it. If you can make a decision that follows the law that supports your constituents, then that's great. But if you're gonna not follow the law in order to vote with the people that have come and want this or want that, then I think, I don't think you followed the law and you're exposing the city to litigation, which I understand that that's been a serious problem here in the past in Fairview, is litigation, that the city can't win.
So, I guess I'm good with that. I just, you know, I'm sorry for the citizens.
Thank you, Chief.
Item E4, Discussion on Not Interrupting Each Other When Speaking Including City Attorney and Citizens. Commissioner Street?
So, this statement was actually supposed to be a discussion on not interrupting a citizen by the BOC, city attorney, and any city employees. Time and time again, I witnessed citizens being interrupted, whether it is by the BOC, city attorney, or various employees, when the citizens are speaking. They should not be interrupted unless their time has expired for the citizens' comments. And this is completely my opinion. I mean, there's a lot of times we cut people off when they're trying to get something out, and it's very hard to speak in front of all of us at the podium. So, I think that we need to be considerate and not interrupt each other, which tonight, the meeting was excellent. I mean, no one interrupted anyone, and it was great, but I just wanna make sure we don't, in my opinion, interrupt the people when they're trying to say something or represent something that they care about.
I would really need an example of that because I have never seen anyone, when someone is speaking, unless they get out of hand and we have to have an officer handle that ever be interrupted. So, I need an example of that because I think we're all very accommodating to anyone who wants to speak, and we listen to them until they are completely done. Matter of fact, in the last public hearing, which I am personally allowing, I'm allowing city, people from Fairview City, people from Fairview County, Williamson County, who live in the Fairview District to speak, and at that public, at the last public hearing, I'm just using that as an example, there were people who came up and spoke like three times, and we never stopped them. Matter of fact, it went on, if I do remember correctly, it was about Bellhaven, for over two hours. And we let everyone speak, we never interrupted anyone. The only time I can ever remember anyone being interrupted is if they got out of hand and needed to be, you know, handled that way. So, I really need an example of how, you know, when that happened, because I just don't recall it.
Town Hall. It happened a few times with the town hall, when the people were trying to speak. And it's not cutting them off and stopping them. It's not that, it's the, when they say something and we respond quickly as they're still talking and trying to say other stuff, that's what I'm talking about. We need to be considerate and not, while they're speaking, interrupt them. And that has happened several meetings.
And I did wanna point out, I just want everybody to understand that if someone is speaking, we have a city attorney who, if he calls point of order, because it is his job to make sure that when we are speaking, if something goes awry, he can call point of order and interrupt that. For example, when we were talking about the de-annexation and Patrick Carter, our city attorney, interrupted you three times and asked you to recuse yourself, that interruption is proper because it's a point of order where, you know, it's a piece of property that, you know, was claimed that there was no interest in, yet, you know, have reason to believe that you run cattle and farm that part of that property. So, what he is trying to do is protect you from, or protect us from litigation and ask you to recuse yourself so that you were to step to the podium and speak as a citizen. Interruptions like that are warranted because he is trying to direct us in a way to make sure that the city's protected. And you understand why he's doing that, right?
I understand his reasoning for doing what he did, but I also knew the legal, the laws and stuff regarding it. And in the beginning, I did state that I am the granddaughter of the property owner, and that I was only there to, for the discussion so I can provide facts about the property. I did it legally because I knew how I could do it legally. I researched it and learned. And even though there's times when things weren't done legally, like it says, I did it legally, and I did not vote, so.
But you did say you didn't have an interest in the property, but yet, do you run cattle and farm a property that, I'm just telling you why interruptions can be made, and that's one of them, is point of order. And point of order is to protect our board from litigation. And, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
It's nice that you've brought up that one thing when it was all done legally. And he did interrupt, but there's other times when people have been interrupted. But still, the whole fact that you brought that up...
It's one that, the only one that I can think of, that's the only reason I brought it up. Matter of fact, I thought that's why you were wanting to speak, you know, what you were actually gonna speak about tonight, is that point of order had to be called three times when he asked you to step to the podium and speak and not speak as a commissioner. And so, I thought, you know, that that probably needed to be clarified, that point of order can be called when someone is not following the proper procedures.
So, everyone knows, this is our mayor, and this is how she acts. She brought up something to come into...
I don't know that I'm saying anything except explaining to you why an interruption can be made, and the only one that I can think of is that one. Just giving an example. If you'd like to give a different example, you're more than welcome.
May I, Mayor?
Yes.
The example that you're talking about, Commissioner Street, and you had said that you had done it legally, in the future, if you have questions about how something should, needs to be done legally, the correct thing to do would be to call me so I can advise you rather than trying to research it on the internet. It'd be like me trying to study engineering, or plumbing, or any number of things, and watching a YouTube video and then feeling like I can do it, because usually that results in a flood, or me shocking myself, or something else. And so, I think that's kind of the equivalent of what happened, because the problem with what you did is that you said, I'm not gonna vote on this, but then you sat at the dais, the podium, the stage, whatever you wanna call it, and started to argue your point. And so, it became confusing for the citizens you represent, what position you were arguing from. Were you arguing as a commissioner? If you were and you weren't gonna vote, then you shouldn't have been discussing the matter. If you were arguing as a granddaughter of the landowner, or perhaps someone that has some interest in the property, you need to be doing it from down here. And so, when you continued to talk, and I interrupted multiple times, it was hopefully to protect this board. Now, if this board, if any of you, if you don't want me to interrupt when you're exposing the city legally, then all you have to do is tell me to be quiet, and I won't interrupt you, I'll just let you go on, and I'll happily defend the lawsuit, because frankly, that's how I make a living. But my, part of my job is to hopefully avoid Fairview being sued, or Fairview stubbing their toe like they've done in the past. And so, Commissioner Street, when you just kept going, and I asked you three times, I don't really know what else I'm supposed to do at that point. And so, if you'd rather me not tell you when you're legally exposing the city, I can shut my mouth, but I don't think that's what I'm being paid to do here. And so, you know, next time you have a legal question, you wanna know how, what the proper way to do something is, send me an email, call me, text me. I take pride in my availability, and I think all of you know that when I get a call, or you text me or call me, I try to respond immediately, rather than trying to figure it out yourself. That's not serving your constituents well. I mean, that's why I'm here.
I contacted MTAS.
Okay, well, that's, that's good. That's good, well...
To clarify my...
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think you understood the response then, because if they had understood what you were saying, they would've told you to gotten off the dais and not stay there and talk in a confusing way.
So, let me also back y'all up. This whole thing was about interrupting the citizens, which did happen quite a bit in town hall. It wasn't about interrupting me at all.
I wasn't at town hall, so I'll just turn my mic off at this.
And there were other meetings where the citizens have been interrupted during the public hearing. So, that's why I brought this up, because I feel like we need to respect them and give them their time to speak, because that's the only time they get to speak.
I do not agree. I don't think we've ever interrupted anyone at a public hearing. I would have to go back on the tapes, which I'm willing to do, and see if that has ever happened. Vice Mayor Butler?
And I just, I wanna state, I was one of three at the town hall, and I apologize to any citizen, if I cut them off. The town hall is my understanding where you actually have back and forth in discussion and talk to each other, where public hearings are a little bit tougher to go back and forth, and so, I thought that was the structure of the town hall, so my apologies if I was guilty of that.
I would agree with you that that's not a public meeting, in the sense that it's not a voting meeting, doesn't require a quorum. The town hall procedure and the way it's set up is much looser, and it's intended to be a discussion, much like Roundtable, which we've renamed in order to facilitate discussion among the board, rather than just making announcements. And so, that's great that you've apologized if that happened, but it's supposed to be a give and take and more conversational in nature. That's the purpose of either a Roundtable or a town hall. Thank you.
Anything else?
So, again, at the town hall, it was nice when you, when we did get to speak to the citizens, but again, it's not when they stop and wait for a response or something, it's when they're talking, and they're getting interrupted, is what I am saying. So, y'all gone all around everything except for what I'm saying, cutting the people off while they're speaking so you can say something real quick. That's what I'm talking about.
Well, Mayor, if I could, I...
Yes, sir.
I'm, I also, I was on vacation that week, so I don't know what transpired at the town hall, but... But was the, when the citizens were cut off, was it more from the board trying to give them an answer? Or was it just stopping them from talking and wanting the next person to come up? What exactly are you saying happened?
When they're saying something and things are cut off because there was a question asked that necessarily the board didn't agree with, they were talking and they interrupted them with something corrupted. But I also said other meetings too. The town hall was some, where I remember some interruptions, and then there are also regular meetings that we've had where people have been interrupted. All I'm saying is that I feel like we need to respect the citizens and like, don't interrupt them. That's all. I just want to make sure they're heard. And y'all have done it all over, everything else, but the fact that I just want to make sure...
They're telling you your mic is off.
I just want to make sure that the people are heard and not interrupted.
And I'm gonna say again, I think we go overboard, and I've gone overboard to allow everyone to speak, be heard. Public hearings are not a dialogue. So I don't know how people are being interrupted when we're not dialoguing with them. So that's confusing to me. Also, citizens' comments are not dialogue. So if they're not dialogue, how is there interruption? And the reason I implemented the town hall is to hear from the citizens and us be able to dialogue back and forth about their concerns and what they'd like to have questions answered. So two of the, two of what you've brought up are not dialogue at all, so I don't know how anybody's interrupted. The other one is a very laid-back town hall meeting where we're doing question and answer, where it's expected for us to go back and forth. So I, you know, I fully respect the citizens, and that's the reason I let them speak as long and as many times as they want to make sure they're heard before we make a vote. Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Item number 12 is our Roundtable, mayor and commissioner discussion. We will start with Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone for coming out. Thank the board for being here tonight. And I am pleased that the board passed the Parks Master Plan. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Tom, when there is a work session that is, that is scheduled, that is not scheduled actually by us during a meeting, how is that, how is that handled? I think the last couple, there's just, something has come to us in the, in the emails saying that there was a work session that's scheduled. Are you scheduling those? Because I'm, and the reason I'm asking is because I don't know if you're reaching out to other commissioners and I'm not getting the emails or how those, how it's going.
I don't know who scheduled this one. It, somebody reached out to Rachel, and, and it got on the agenda, and I thought, oh, the agendas went out to everybody.
The agendas do, but I'm just saying, normally, I would think that we would be reaching out to the board individually to make sure that the members could be present. And it seems like the last couple of these, they've just been scheduled. I'm just asking what your policy is, how you're doing it.
We, our policy has been that just if there needs to be a work session, we have it at 6:00 before the meeting. And it, if we need to change that or reach out and say, hey, if it's, can, if there... I mean, we can, we can do it however the board chooses.
Okay. I was just wondering if there was an actual method to how, how you were doing it.
Are we advertising them, the work, the work sessions? Just, okay. It's a, it's a public meeting, and we should be advertising them. So the first notice you get of the work session is when the agenda comes out?
The last couple, that's when I've gotten it correct.
But we're advertising it probably, what, two weeks ahead?
The first, the work session prior to this, Commissioner Butler reached out. I think they had contacted him and requested a work session. So he, he reached out to me and asked me to schedule it before the meeting. This particular work session tonight, I emailed each commissioner and I asked if they were good to go on the vote for the Parks Master Plan or if they needed an additional work session. They all responded that they were good with it except for Commissioner Street, and she would like, wanted another work session. So Keith scheduled that with Ms. Roberts.
And that, was that, like, how long ago, how long ago did we decide to have the work session tonight? And I was going on the first week of July, so I honestly don't have an answer to that question.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how long. It was at least a week and a half or...
I guess, I guess maybe when, when it gets scheduled and when we place the advertisement, maybe we can put an emphasis on sending a separate email or notifying the commissioners that it has in fact been scheduled and...
Could I, could I ask a question based on that? Shouldn't, shouldn't we be looking at it from the aspect of, if we're gonna have it, we need to make sure the commissioners can attend?
Well, that's, now, so you don't have to have a, you don't have to have a quorum because there's no vote, but...
But if we're having a work session, we really want participation.
Well, that's, that's why I think as soon as we know we're gonna have one and we're getting ready to, you know, before we advertise, there needs to be some notification that we make sure that we can have people here because if only two of you show up, then the work session really is kind of a waste because the other, the others are gonna have the same questions, and we're gonna have to retread it at 7:00, so...
That's what I'm getting.
But why don't you let staff think a little bit more about that and make sure that we have a good procedure in place to make sure that when we schedule one, you know, we can get a good attendance because if we're not, then we might as well just wait till 7:00 and discuss it then. Especially with the way we kind of do work sessions here, it's not a regularly scheduled thing. It's kind of when you need them. So I do think that's a good point about making sure that we have a participants, so...
Thank you. Commissioner Street?
I just want to say I'm excited about going to the fire station on the first. And I really can't, can't wait to be there. I think it's gonna be fun and interesting to learn how everything works because I know, I hear them going up and down the highway all the time. So I know they're busy, and it's like, it's nice to know what all they really have to go to, go through. And I just want to thank, thank the board for letting me have some discussions, discussing things with me because that's the only way we can ever talk about anything. So I appreciate it.
And on that, Commissioner Street, that's one of the reasons why I suggested that we called this a Roundtable rather than what it was formally called, which, which just the name discouraged discussion. And the fact is, because of the Sunshine laws, you can't discuss things other than when we're here meeting, right? And so the idea of a Roundtable is to have a, to have a discussion, and that's, that's legal. That, you know, that's not, that's okay under the Sunshine law. So I'm glad that it's working out that way because that's how, that's what it was intended.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Very excited to see the Parks Master Plan come to place. Thank you guys for all the hard work on that. Welcome to the new officers and also congratulations to the graduates and future graduates. And then the world, the city of Fairview is hosting the World Series for eight and nine-year-old and nine and 10-year-old girls, July 29th through August 1st. It starts July 29th. I think at 9:00 a.m. is the first game. It's gonna be an all-day event, so if you've got some time, go out there and watch some great softball. There's 21 teams coming into Fairview from different states to come and play, so it's a pretty exciting event for us. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so I just attended yesterday July's GNRC meeting, Greater Nashville Regional Council. I sit on the board. I'm a voting member. Not often do they bring up Fairview. I did talk to them about our traffic light on Cumberland and 100 and also our road widening. A lot of people ask about that. We are on the list. So it will happen. We just have to, you know, graduate up towards the top of the list. Also, it was interesting to me, when they were speaking, they said that Fairview had been removed from being considered a designation of urban. And so we've been removed from that, and we've been moved to rural. The definition of that is, when I asked the question, "Why were we removed from urban to rural?" The, they answered me, "Because Fairview does not have enough development per acre to be considered urban anymore." So we have been demoted to rural. And what that affects is grants and funding for our city. So they did say that in the near future, we should be moved back to urban, but I did want to, you know, let everyone know that when I go to these meetings, I listen and I vote, but not always does Fairview get, you know, spoken about. But this meeting, we happened to, so that was good. Also, to Lisa Roberts, your team, ESP, thank you for everything you did. The master plan looks great. We're excited to use that as a guide to move forward, to have a great park system. So thank you for that. I would like to welcome Maria Vanderknapp and John Gunn as new officers in Fairview. Because of the budget that we passed, we have not only helped our officers who are on staff with us right now to retain them, but we have really gotten the attention of really some good officers in other communities who do not have to go through academy. They're ready to go. So, and as well with fire, we're fully staffed now, which is just, you know, exciting. So I just thank all the officers because I see you every day, and you really work hard for our community and keep us safe, as well as fire too. Thank you. Congratulations to the academy graduates and the ones who are about to graduate. As Vice Mayor Butler stated, we are so excited to host the Little League World Series. That is a great honor. Our new lights are in. And so it, it's, I encourage anyone in the community who wants to see some really good ball, softball, just, you know, come out at the end of the month. It should be, you know, quite a fun time for everyone. Let's see. I do want to point out that I've had such good response about our codes department. We've got pretty much a whole new codes department with Ethan and Maria. And we've got Will Owen back with Griggs and Mahoney doing engineering. And we've got Thomas Ponder doing our codes inspection. He is certified in residential and commercial. He's on staff with us now, so we don't have to just have him on Tuesday and Thursday. He's here with us every day. We had a situation today where the codes department was called. Some trees were being taken down for some sewer to move through from one development to another. There was some current concern from the community. They called Ethan Greer. He responded immediately. They always call me, so... And they let me know that he answered all of their questions and satisfied everything that they asked to make sure that they understood what was happening and that the trees weren't being removed. So I really appreciate you just jumping right in with both feet and taking on that. That, that was really encouraging with our, you know, everything I've been told and everything that people come and talk to me every day, all day at my shop. And they just give such glowing reports on our staff and what we've got going on right now. So I can't thank you guys enough. As I always say, let's keep Fairview beautiful and, you know, pick up trash and don't throw it out. And thank you all for coming. We appreciate you being here. Thank you guys at home who are watching. We, we know that you're here with us. So that's all I have for tonight. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, guys.